All right, we're gonna call to order the Plaza 1006 meeting, April 16th at 6:25. Amanda did phone ahead and said she'd be running a few minutes late, but we do have a quorum. Board Business, discussion of possible action on the following items. Item 2A, Consent Agenda Financial Report for Physical Year 24, Quarter Ending March 31st, 2024. And item number 2, Plaza 10 Meeting Minutes for 31924.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items 1 and 2 for Plaza 106 Corporation.
I'll say it.
Okay, got a motion by Rick, got a second by Jeff. Is there any discussion on those two items? Okay.
Very nice job on the financial report, thank you. Very easy to read.
We were just talking about that today. All right, any more discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Okay, motion passes. Item B, Ordinance 2024-04, An Ordnance Adopting Amendment Number 1 to the Approved Budget for Plaza 1006 for the Physical Year 24, Increasing the Amounts and Expenditures Accounts of the Corporation Due to Unforeseen Situations Containing Findings, Providing Severability, and Providing Other Details Relating There Too. Cheryl, would you like to speak about that? Or do you want me to handle that?
So, this is just a budget amendment to cover the lights and the drain addition. I think it's, Randy could really speak more to the project side of it, but this was just pulling money in to cover those accounts, those expenses.
Yeah, so this is to cover the other walkway and the drainage at the front of Oakies and the light fixtures. After talking to the attorney, Dick, he mentioned that we could use money from there to improve those lights instead of taking that from the EDC. We would rather do that from there. It's an expenditure we can assume from there. So that's what that budget amendment was for. We have a motion?
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2024-04.
Okay.
I'll second.
Got a motion from Rick, got a second from Amanda. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item C, Approved Replacement of Entryway Lighting on Clear Lake Road Through Contract with GBS Electric in the Amount of $35,569.30. So, we kinda went a roundabout way to get here. We started out, you know, somewhere else doing this, bringing it in front of EDC. So what I've done since then, since we learned we can purchase this out of the Plaza 1006, went to the EDC meeting the other night, and I did want their approval on these light fixtures. I think everybody's seen them in their packet once or twice already. I think Johnny will speak. All seven members of the EDC agree that those light fixtures look pretty close, are about as close as what we're gonna find to what we have. They will be the blue color, we did talk about that, but they're going to an LED which will reduce some of the electrical use and it'll put out a better footprint there up front. So they do have three different settings on them, so what I was gonna do is have them set up three different lights in the beginning. That way, we can pick what format of that lighting we want. I know that was a concern of yours, Rick, which lighting are we gonna get? The really, really bright or the yellow? I think we'll be able to set them up that way and just kinda pick which one we wanna go with. They did say most of them use the highest setting because it's the brightest, most cities, but we'll have that choice, we can make that determination.
Well, I'll make a motion, we approve item C, Approved Replacement of Entryway Lighting on Clear Lake Road.
I'll second.
All right, got a motion by Jeff, got a second by Alex. Is there any discussion on that item? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Motion to pass is unanimous, and we'll adjourn that meeting at 6:30. Okay, we will call meeting to order for the regular city council meeting, April 16th, 2024, at 6:31 PM. We have a quorum, and we'll say the pledge of allegiance. Okay, moving to item 3, Reports From City Council. Ed Waters?
I don't have anything to report at this time.
What? I'm teasing you, Ed. Rick Fisher?
Just wanna say, I hope everybody survived the garage sale this weekend unscathed. It looks like it went pretty smooth, I didn't see too many traffic jams around, I was pretty happy with that. We do have an item coming up on the agenda here for the changes for the new pool membership for 2024. We'll talk about that more when that item comes up. I just wanna say, thank you Mary Acume for all the work that you and the Parks Pool Committee have done on that. I know that it's been a long and arduous process and a lot of research has been done, but thank you very much for all your work on it.
All right, thank you, Rick. Jeff Terrell?
Kinda what Rick said, just thank everybody for the garage sale this weekend. Unfortunately, I wasn't around, but it sounded like it went pretty good, and that was a lot of hard work putting it together, so thank you to everybody that did that.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Alex Scanlon?
No report.
Mayor Pro Tim, Amanda Fenwick?
I don't have anything tonight, Mayor.
Nothing to report, oh my, everybody's quiet. So y'all trying to leave all that room for me since I talk so much? I got you, I appreciate that. So, I'm gonna touch on the ESB meeting, we went to the ESB meeting, Amanda and I, last night, and some of you know that the fire truck was in an accident a month or so ago. They thought that thing was gonna be out for several months, but somehow luckily found apart here in Houston and got their insurance processed, and it looks like they're only gonna be out a few more weeks, and they'll have that thing back on the road, so that was good news. Moving forward, yes, the garage sale was a success. I came home from a trip to see thousands of people all over the island, had to go get me a chili cheese dog from the Civic Club, and it was awesome. And my wife made a little money for me. Boat ramp update. From what I understand, today, we are about two weeks away from getting a permit. Wow. We're gonna be, we're gonna have a permit soon, we're gonna start that project, that's pretty awesome. Public Works, checked on the truck today, the truck is still a couple of weeks out, it's taking a little longer to get things to where they want it to be and get that bed mounted, but they're working diligently on that, so that's coming in a few weeks also. Checked on the walkways, what we were talking about, the budget amendment was for, the walkways and that little bit of drainage up at Oakies connecting the parking lot, and the update on that is, they've been out with the 811, they've marked everything that's in the ground, they've actually applied for the permit, Angie said, and that permit is in review right now, so that'll be happening here pretty quickly. Contractors, so, talking about this FEMA thing a little bit, I just wanted to let everybody know, there, I see on Facebook a lot, I can't make you do anything, I'm just gonna make a suggestion. Be careful hiring a handyman to do a lot of your work. Number one, they're probably not insured. Number two, they don't pull permits in a lot of cases. That kinda led us down the road to be where we're at, at times, with this FEMA CAV, so make sure you're using somebody that's licensed in their trade. Mechanical, electrical, and plumbing have to have a license, you have to have insurance, you have to be registered with the city. If you're not, I probably wouldn't use those people. That's just my professional opinion, that'll keep you out of trouble. Last but not least, this is my last thing, I'm not gonna talk very long. So, I got a letter on April 11th. This letter says, Dear Mayor Cronister, the message and the attached letter are provided to you, an update on the notice of completion of the CAV. We closed the CAV. So FEMA successfully closed the National Flood Insurance Program Community Assistant Visit for the City of Clear Lake Shores, initiated on July 16th, 2019. It's sad that it's five years old, but we got it closed. It was a lot of hard work. I'm gonna tell you, when you see Angie, thank her, because she's had to put up with me and push and push and push and ask a lot of questions, and a lot of hours went into this, so we worked very hard on this, and I'm very glad to see that it's over. So, it's over for now, they're gonna be coming back in six months, and what they wanna do is they wanna make sure that we are following the outline that I sent to them on how we're gonna correct some of our deficiencies, so I'm still gonna lean on you guys to comply. We are not gonna send any letters out telling you you have to rip anything out. I'm gonna go back to the one thing that I mentioned in the FEMA meeting, if you were here, if you saw it online, that was very informative, and I'm gonna say, if you wanna partner with us and you wanna know where you're gonna be at in case there is a flood event, we're supposed to have one heck of an active season this season as far as hurricanes and bad weather, I encourage you to do that. If you get ahold of Angie and you make an appointment and say, hey, this is where, I just wanna know where I'm at in case we have an event, what do I gotta do, what can I put back? We can help you with that. We're not gonna come in and say, you gotta tear it all out today, that's not happening. I am working on a follow-up letter from that FEMA meeting where I'm gonna reach out to everyone and basically in writing, invite them to do the same thing, but I would rather know before an event, to know what I can do and get my permit faster and start rebuilding, than waiting until the event happens and there's 150 people deep before you can get a permit. So that's the suggestion I have for you, let's partner up and move forward from this. But I will say, I'm very proud that this got closed in about five and a half weeks that I worked on it, and we couldn't get it done in five years, so I am proud of that. Moving on to staff reports, Chief Gonison?
No report, Mayor.
All right, that means everything's safe in the city? Thank you, sir. Committee reports, roads and drainage? I don't see Thomas.
I guess I can do this, we're meeting next Thursday, I believe, the last Thursday of the month. We'll be in the clubhouse, if anyone wants to join, it's at 4 o'clock. I shared this map at the last meeting, this is the PMG Pave and Management Group product, it's a GIS map that shows the island, it shows the condition of the roads, and we've actually been working with them, they're incorporating our drainage system into it, so we have an active master drainage plan in the works and a, you know, a system here where we're gonna be able to hand this off to our new city administrator and city staff where they can go on and identify what we call hotspots, if there's a pothole or a clogged culvert, they can add, the city staff can go in and add, or the Roads and Drainage Committee can say, hey, there's a pothole on Hawthorne, and drop an asterisk or a star or something on there and actually use this as a tool to maintain the city's infrastructure, so it's a big step, I'm glad we did it, it was reasonably affordable, and we will have this on the website probably within a month or two, and this is available publicly, you can go in and if we have data for the culvert in front of your house, it'll be available, right? So if you're doing culvert work or working on your ditch, any data the city has will be available to you as well, 24 hours a day. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you, Alex. Parks and Pool?
Okay, we met on April 9th, and the main discussion item for that meeting was to finalize the recommendations for the new pool packet for 24 to 25 season, which is gonna be discussed here in a little bit, it's an agenda item. And then, the other thing is, current pool memberships will expire on April 30th, so current fobs will be deactivated, all of them, you have to come back to renew for next year. The Civic Club is hosting the annual ice cream social, it's May 2nd, 6:30 at the pool, it's a great time to just come out, have some yummy ice cream, visit with your neighbors, and then, right then and there, you can pay and renew for next year. May 2nd, it's a Thursday, and so that's usually the night Civic Club has their monthly meeting, so that, for May, is actually the meeting, it's out at the pool for the ice cream social. The only other thing is, at the garage sale, we were selling the old birdhouses that used to be at the, you know, Triangle Birdhouse Park. We have, I think, about seven left, so if you did not get one and you want to have a little piece of history, a little art history here for Clear Lake Shores, they're $5, and you can contact me, contact Ed if you want, and we can get you one of those. And we're trying to just use that money towards a new future fun project for one of the parks, so that's all we got.
All right, thank you. Moving on, waterfront compliance?
I talked to Doug this week, he should get the reply for the violation letters that he sent out, and then the next step will come up for the ones he doesn't hear back from after that.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ed. Planning and zoning?
Mayor Council, no activity for planning and zoning or zoning board of adjustments.
I think you picked like the two easiest ones to be on, just saying. Okay, thank you, sir. Civic Club report?
Thank you, as Mary mentioned, the garage sale was a great success, thank you Mary and all the volunteers that helped make this happen, as well as the concession stand. We were able to net about $1,000 for our scholarship program, and that is great, I think that's a record since Mary and I have been doing this. As Mary said, the ice cream social is on May 2nd, come out for some ice cream and get your new pool membership. Steak and Sinatra will be back on May 11th. I've been in contact with Sam, and we're gonna get a flyer out soon on that. As a reminder, the scholarship application deadline is May 15th, if you have a senior here, or if you know of a senior, please ask them to apply. The deadline will be 5:15, all of the information is on our website. At our last meeting, we did elect officers, Georgia South, myself, I will continue for one more term as the president, Shannon McGinty will continue one more term as the secretary, Linda Ware was our treasurer, and she has resigned, and Joanna Vicenti was appointed to finish out the term through October. I wanna thank Linda for all of her time and effort to the Civic Club and the community. Also of note, this Thursday night, the Clear Lake Shores History Committee is hosting a program here in the clubhouse that gives an insider's view of a conflict that captivated the nation in the late 1970s and early 80s. The speaker will be retired Seabrook Police Chief, William Kerber, and he will be here to discuss some of the history around in the area, so everyone is welcome to come, it's a free event. Thank you.
Mayor Council, we had our regular EDC meeting last Tuesday, and we approved our annual stakeholder invoice for the visit Bay Area Houston CVB. We also approved engineering work for the east public parking lot, which I think y'all are gonna discuss here a little bit later. Also, we, Thomas Holland has gotten a list of our businesses to the city that are permitted here in Clear Lake Shores, and we're gonna go through and divvy that up amongst some of the EDC members to discuss and meet with some of those businesses to see how, you know, we can help and what the city and EDC can do for them. We also discussed some of the lightings, like you mentioned, and that's it.
Andy.
We'll move on to public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business may speak to the city council if the topic of discussion is related to an item on the agenda, the comments may be made now or at the time the agenda item is discussed. If the topic of discussion is not related to an item on the agenda, the city council cannot deliberate or take any action at this time. Comments from the public should be limited to a maximum of three minutes per individual. Would anybody like to address the council? Going once, going twice? All right, we'll move on from public comments, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Anybody have anything they wanna discuss or pull off the consent agenda?
I have one change to the council meeting minutes from April 2nd. Item B, it says that I made the motion and I also made the second, I think Councilman Fisher made the second on that item, so with that, I'll approve, I'll motion to approve the consent agenda with that change.
I'll second.
All right, got a motion from Amanda, got a second from Alex. Any discussion on any of those items? Okay, all in favor? Motion passes unanimous. Moving on to item number 10, New Business. Item A, Review and Approve Changes to the Clear Lake Shores Community Pool Membership Rules and Regulations, Mr. Fisher.
All right, well, this was a accumulation of a lot of work from Mary and the Parks and Pool Committee. They've actually pared it down to a much shorter list of rules by combining a lot. A lot of the good news is, the membership prices have actually come down quite a bit for both residents and non-residents. Just the ones last year, I think for the adult, were $75, now they're down to $55. Another one of the big changes that we're gonna do this year, instead of purchasing individual guest passes, they came up with a brilliant idea, you're gonna put, if you wanna bring guests, you'll just purchase a guest pass, and for residents, it'll be $75, basically it's gonna be a little blue card that you bring in. And with that blue card, you can bring in basically as many guests as you want, you do not have to have an individual guest pass for each guest at this point. The only amendment that I want to make on this is, if you look on the second page here under the fee schedule, for the guest pass, they had the resident guest pass and they had an NA there for the non-resident. We decided to change that to, we only have four non-residents right now that are actually members of the pool, and they're all over in chima, and didn't think it would be fair for them not to be able to, you know, bring a guest if they had children or something visiting over a weekend or something. So, we would like to amend that, if you'd put it in to make that, it'd be $75 for the resident guest pass and $100 for the non-resident guest pass instead of NA. That was the only change that we came up that we wanted to do. Other than that, I think everything on it was pretty straightforward. The age regulations, it was, there's a little confusion in there, basically the way it's all it's saying that if their lifeguards are on duty, anybody between 13 and 17 years old must always be accompanied by an adult over 18, children under the age of 12, regardless of any time they're there, have to have a parent or guardian. If lifeguard is not present, obviously if you're under 12, you have to have a parent or guardian, 13 years or older, regardless of age, must have another adult 18 years or older with them. Basically, it's just saying, you can't swim alone. That was, I guess, one of the issues that we were trying to keep ourselves out of legal issues with it, so no, you know, no lifeguards on duty, you can't swim alone, you have to have somebody else with you. Other than that, I think anything else in there was pretty straightforward, unless anybody had any questions on it?
So, I just have a, I'm just curious if you guys talked about the pool hours, just wondering, with children under 18, has it always been that they can't be there past 8:00 PM? Is that because of lifeguards? I'm just curious, I'm just thinking over the summer, right, like, my kid might be the only one that goes to bed at 8:30, but, I mean, kids are out over the summer, sometimes past 8, so I was just curious. I don't remember if it's always been that way, maybe it has, and my thought, then I thought, well, maybe it's because that's when the lifeguards leave, and we don't want kids there without lifeguards, I don't know.
Lines up with the time that the lifeguards leave, you know? I don't remember.
Go for it, Mary, you're on.
Okay, so it used to be 9, you are correct, they were allowed to go till 9:00 PM. We moved it up an hour to 8, because yes, that is when the lifeguards leave, that's also when it gets dark, pretty much in the summertime, between 8:00 and 8:30, and so it just seemed, we did a little research, and majority of the pool users are adults in our community, so we were trying to kind of help them out a little bit by having children leave an hour early, so that extends the adult hour times, because, I don't know about you, but not all adults wanna go out and swim at 10:00 PM. I mean, you might wanna be there, you know, in the evening, after dinner or something, and so that's why we were thinking, this gives the adults a little bit more quiet time, and you're right, most children are home, you know, after dark, not always, but, you know, that just kinda also covers for the busy time of year, which is summer, and lifeguards, that's why we have them present, is to help with all the children. So if the lifeguards leave, it kinda makes sense to have the children leave.
Okay.
Yeah, so that was something we were suggesting.
And then, just so I understand the fees, so two adults in a house, they each purchase their own adult pass, and then you purchase the children's pass for each child in your home?
Correct, correct.
So the guest fee, the $75, it's whether, if you have one guest for the entire summer, it's $75 or?
Correct, so that'll last you an entire year, the entire year of your membership, which again, for the most part, most people around here are swimming actually in the pool during the summer due to weather, that is when it has the most traffic at least, but at least it does give, any time of the year, if you wanna bring a guest, we kind of, we kinda looked at it the way, as if like, if you are planning on bringing a guest, which most people do, and a good example is two residents, two adults that live here, they might have grandchildren come, stay with them almost every weekend of the summer, and so instead of having to keep up with multiple little passes, maybe forgetting to get passes, and now it's Friday at 4 o'clock and the city's closed, and so now they feel like they can't bring their kids, you know, the grandkids in, so this just kinda covers them at a flat fee all year long, which again, usually is about mainly six months of the year during the summer months. And so, whether they bring one resident, you know, one guest all year long, or if they wanna bring two grandkids every single weekend all summer long, it covers them. And it identifies, if you noticed in your packet, we had a sample of what a guest pass could look like, it'll be like about the size of a business card, it'll be plastic, and so it can just slip onto the key ring of the key fob, and then it's easy identifiable to the lifeguards, so when you're at the pool, they can see you have a blue pass on your keychain and you're walking in with your guest. And so, again, mainly lifeguards are there to keep up with our safety and to keep up with numbers, and so that's why it's important to sign in the book to let them know how many people are actually in the pool at a time, in case it exceeds their maximum, they have to call in extra lifeguards, so. That was just something there, essentially like your receipt, if you could imagine, that you purchased a guest pass for the year when you're coming.
So, did you guys have data on how many guests we actually had that used guest passes last year?
So unfortunately, there's no way to record that, other than maybe what the city actually sold.
Right, that's what I was asking, have we, do we know? Was that part of this decision? I don't, I'm not in favor of a $75, one $75 guest pass, because- I don't know, I'm not in favor of a seventy-five, one seventy-five dollar guest pass, because we have a friend that wants to come once, that's an expensive trip to the pool, so I'm just trying to figure out how that decision was made.
I think I had three guests last year.
What's that?
I had three guests last year. So, I'm saying, we wouldn't be going swimming.
So...
Yeah, but you, but otherwise, you had ten individual guest passes you could've used. That's what you had last year?
Yeah, and we did, and we did.
Right.
But seventy-five dollars for three times, I wouldn't do that.
Right. Did you have, did we have complaints about the individual guest passes? Sorry, I keep looking over here, 'cause I'm gonna guess those complaints come to the city, but they may have come to Parks and Pools. They were given ten free, right, that's what I thought. Buy extra, okay.
So, our only data on that right there is the fact that we do not have a gatekeeper at our pool, and so a gatekeeper is the one that would actually be recording all the guest information.
But we're supposed to stick our guest passes in the book, right?
Correct. We are supposed to do that, but due to the fact that not everyone is honest, it's not always done that way. And so, from our committee speaking to the pool lifeguards, the pool management company, from their observations, what they share with us is that people are not utilizing the guest passes, and they're just bringing people in regardless. So, we are hoping that this is something that will encourage the community to honestly pay a fee, and now they don't have to worry about keeping up with the physical card, turning it into the lifeguard, 'cause they always said too, they had trouble keeping up with them if it was like really windy, the little cards would like blow out of their book, you know, things like that. So, it was just something, and possibly a cost to the city, instead of having to print the little paper cards over and over and over again, the cost of that.
We're at the pool almost every weekend, and I'm, the pool's my baby, so, I'm gonna tell you, there's tons of people that come there, don't bring passes, they tell the guards they don't have to, the guards can't require them. Now, if the city wants to agree to pay somebody an additional nineteen dollars an hour to sit there and do nothing but gatekeep, we can do that. But seventy-five dollars, and that covers all your guests, so it doesn't matter if it's one, it doesn't matter if it's five, you know, it doesn't matter, and then it's covered, and I just think it's safer being there. I've watched too many people come in, too many people cuss guards, nobody brings the thing. We have people that go down to city and add their grandkids, ten, ten of them, for the summertime, and they don't live here, and they just say, well, they're part of my family pass. So, it just covers it for everybody, and it keeps everybody honest.
I'm at the pool a lot, too, and I know that there's a lot of people there, but I just don't, in my opinion, think that that is reasonable, and I don't have a solution, 'cause I wanted, when I read that, I wanted to make sure I understood it, understood it correctly, so.
Is there a Airbnb clause for one guest pass?
I was gonna ask that question.
And seventeen people, Friday through Sunday?
Right. How, I mean, how do you know that Airbnb owners aren't buying a guest pass and leaving it in their house, and people are showing up?
Well, you still have to attend with the resident.
Said, nobody's looking and asking, you know, for that, so.
I know.
Yeah.
It's kind of a double-ended sword that, unless a gatekeeper is hired and we do, you know, a cash drawer on site, which I did some research around neighboring pools in other communities, and they all go to an individual fee schedule, children and adults. They also to have gatekeepers, and so you have to record, some of them, you have to actually prove your residency on site, too. So, it was, yes, yeah. So, you know, it's trying to adapt to the size of our community. It was also looking at who actually uses our pool on a regular basis, and how can we create a system for them that, where they can enjoy the pool for a reasonable rate all year long, 'cause, again, a lot of the pools are on a daily fee schedule. So, you literally just pay when you come, whether you bring ten people with you or one, you know, each time you're paying, so.
So, those other pools you looked at, Mary, were they managed by Gulf Coast Authority?
I don't know their management companies.
And my next question then would be, is their gatekeeper a city employee or a pool management employee?
That's a good question as well.
I will say that I reached out to them, Gulf Coast Aquatics, and asked them about some of the issues we were having, 'cause I heard from Chris and others, and like they were saying, people are coming up there and mistreating the lifeguards. Well, the lifeguards are kids. Couple of them that live here don't want a lifeguard anymore because of it. So, I did reach out to David and ask them to have a presence up there this summer and start showing up randomly, to give them some sort of backing as children. They do provide, not a gatekeeper, but they do provide a book, and they do require us to sign into that book. That is part of our package. Now, I don't know why that went away. I heard some mention that Chris did something with that or whatever, but that is part of our package, so I think we should have somebody sign in.
I think we still have it. It just physically couldn't be found at the moment, so we're thinking it's stored in the pool closet, so that's the next thing to, but it is noted in here, signing in is required. It's at the bottom of page two.
So, when they sign in, they should have to provide their ID or their pass or whatever at that time, in my opinion, and if they're having trouble, they have a way to get ahold of the PD immediately. Now, I did talk to her when she said their requirement as lifeguards are to call her first. What I told her is, they may be gone by the time you get there. You need to call the PD first. If those people are abusing those children, they're a lot closer, and they can deal with that a lot quicker. And that's what we discussed doing this summer, to kinda put that to bed.
We're also considering, we'd like to move the sign-in station closer to the gate. We're gonna provide a lifeguard with an umbrella, so they, when they're on deck, not actually in the chair, they can still be in the shade. And that way, residents, whether the lifeguard themselves is maybe not a very outspoken lifeguard and doesn't wanna say something to the residents, they will understand when they come in. They simply just need to put their name, how many adults, how many children, how many guests. And the beauty of the fob system, everything's linked to that fob serial number, so everything can be traced back to that resident, because as soon as you swipe it, you're in the system. So, the guest pass just simply allocates and identifies that you're coming in, and the lifeguard sitting there sees that you have honestly paid to bring guests to the pool. Because, again, like everything, costs are rising, the cost of lifeguards, the cost of the management of the pool itself, so looking at, you know, how many people are actually swimming in the pool, and then how many people are bringing guests, whether rightfully or wrongfully, it's just trying to get a little bit more for the city to bring benefits of having lifeguards, and encourage these lifeguards to keep coming to our community, and that we respect them, and we appreciate them.
Do we have any motions on this matter?
All motion to approve the changes to the community pool membership rules with Rick's amendment.
I'll second.
Motion by Alex, a second by Rick. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, we got three in favor. Anybody opposed? We got two opposed, Amanda and Ed. Okay, motion passes three to two. Okay, moving on. Item B, Ordinance Twenty Twenty Four dash oh three, an ordinance adopting Amendment Number Four to the Approved Budget for the City of Clear Lake Shores, Texas, for the physical year twenty-three, increasing the amounts and expenditures accounts of the general fund due to unforeseen situations containing findings, providing for severability, and providing other details relating thereto. So, this is, correct me if I'm wrong, Cheryl, but these are from some expenditures that we had, and we're just doing our budget amendment to line that up with our budget. Is that correct?
Well, this is actually for fiscal twenty twenty-three, so we're going to close out fiscal twenty twenty-three. Now that we've, you know, we're six months past the end of the year, and we booked everything, and we're just about gonna be finished with our audit, and so it's just to cover some departments that were overspent, not very, I think it was just a couple, and put it, just put it to bed.
Okay, all right. Thank you for clearing that up.
All motion to approve Ordinance Twenty Twenty Four dash zero three.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Alex, got a second by Amanda. Is there any discussion on Ordinance Twenty Twenty Four dash oh three? Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimous. Moving on to Item C, Ordinance Twenty Twenty Four dash oh four, an ordinance adopting Amendment Number One to the Approved Budget of Plaza Ten Oh Six Corporation for the physical year twenty-four, increasing the amounts and expenditures accounts of the corporation due to unforeseen situation containing findings, providing for severability, and providing other details relating thereto. So, this budget is for what is later on here, if we approve the lighting. We needed to make a budget amendment for this anyway, because we had some of the walkways that got approved that we needed to have in line with our budget. So, that's what this budget amendment's for. And I do appreciate you trying to go along and do these as we go, instead of one for multiple things. That's what used to happen, so thanks for keeping us in line.
A motion, a motion that we approve Ordinance Twenty Twenty Four dash oh four.
Okay, got a motion by Ed.
I'll second it.
Got a second by Rick. Any discussion on that ordinance? Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimous. Moving on to Item D, confirm Plaza Ten Oh Six approval of replacement of entryway lighting on Clear Lake Road through the contract with GBS Electric in the amount of thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty cents. I think you all know what that's for. We've been in and around about way back to here now, but we at least know now where the money's coming from and what we're gonna do moving forward.
All right, make a motion that we approve the, our improvement of the replacement of the entryway lighting on Clear Lake Road through the contracts with the GBS Electric for thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine and thirty cents.
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion by Rick, got a second by Ed. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Motion passes unanimous. Moving down to Item D, confirm approval of EDC for colliers engineering and design to provide engineering and job oversight for payment of the east parking lot. So, this is, Alex, actually, I'm gonna let you speak about this, because you were very involved in the two prices and proposals, and very vocal about that.
Okay.
And I appreciate that.
All right. Hopefully, this is the end of this one. So, council in your packet, I had an email attached that details the scope of this parking lot project that we're all very aware of, that EDC has decided to fund. This is the lot next to Galveston Bay Brewing. It's called the East Lot, it's the gravel lot, it's the big one. We had our, the original engineering firm, Cobb Finley, that designed the gravel lot, I had them quote this exact scope of work, had colliers as well. You can see both of those quotes are in your packet. The colliers one is, I think, more reasonable, and they're doing a larger, a larger scope of work than what Cobb Finley was doing. I gotta, I asked Cobb Finley to re-quote with a reduced scope to see if we could, I don't know, try to, it would make sense to use them, because they're already familiar with the project, and they have all the drawings and a lot of the survey data, but at the end of the day, they wanted to start from scratch, so really, we're looking at two equivalent quotes, essentially, starting from zero, except what, you know, what designs we have from five or eight years ago, and colliers is significantly less expensive in the nature of like twenty, twenty-three thousand plus dollars, which, you know, I think is, you know, it's not, it's not cheap. I think the, what's the overall quote for this, is sixty-one, sixty-one thousand dollars, almost sixty-two thousand, so it's, you know, not, not cheap. I think it's a fair, a fair price for the scope of work, and it'll give us an opportunity to work with them on a whole project. They'll also be providing some bidding services and some con, I'm sorry, I'm very tired today, some construction administration, which will be good for our new city administrator, for his first project, to maybe work with someone with experience doing that, get him up to speed, so I'm gonna, I'll recommend and I'll motion that we approve, whatever this thing is called, the EDC to approve collier engineering and design to provide engineering oversight for the east lot.
I'll second. And I'll just say, Alex, thank you for your email. That was, answered a lot of my questions that I probably was gonna ask, so appreciate that.
Okay, got a motion by Alex, got a second by Amanda. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimous. That'll take us in.
Thank you, Alex, for all the work you did on that. That's, yeah.
We will recess into executive session at seven eleven PM.